Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Do we have a closed session report?
Mayor, members of the council, there are no items to report out.
Thank you. Annika, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Here.
Councilmember Littler?
Here.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Here.
Mayor Protem Judge?
Here.
Mayor Thomas?
Here.
Are there any items for agenda review?
Mr. Mayor, we have one item on the dais for you, which is a replacement of page 15 for Agenda Item 8A. The printed document just has an internal review comment, and we're just removing that from the official document.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move that all resolutions and ordinances presented tonight be read in title only, and all further reading be waived.
Second.
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
If any member of the City Council may have a conflict of interest or any other reason why that member must abstain from consideration of any matter on this agenda, he or she should declare so at this time. Hearing none.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the first item on the agenda is Item 1D1, Presentation of a Proclamation Declaring the Month of May 2023 as Older Americans Month. And Assistant Community Services Manager Raquel Worth is here to present this item. And accepting the proclamation is Council on Aging Chair Carol Martin.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and members of City Council. This evening, I would like to invite Carol Martin to come forward to accept the proclamation designating May as Older Americans Month. Carol is especially qualified to represent the seniors in our community. She is the current Council on Aging Chair and the volunteer volunteer coordinator for the senior center. Carol personifies this year's Older Americans Month theme of aging unbound by paving her own path and encouraging others to explore a wide range of experiences as they age. It is with great pleasure that I now read the proclamation. Whereas, the city of Simi Valley includes an increasing number of older Americans who make the quality of life in our city even better through their participation in the workforce and as volunteers on boards, committees, and for service organizations. And whereas, the city of Simi Valley is home to over 20,000 residents aged 65 years of age or older and is committed to engaging and supporting older adults, their families, and caregivers, and ensuring it is responsive to seniors' needs and preferences. And whereas, the city of Simi Valley is dedicated to providing opportunities that promote physical, mental, social, and emotional well-being for seniors to enhance each individual's overall health and to help them thrive, be financially stable, and remain in their community. Whereas, the city of Simi Valley believes in promoting home and community-based services and resources that provide older Americans with vital nutrition programs and social services that address food insecurity and assist in promoting self-advocacy. And whereas, the city of Simi Valley is dedicated to ensuring that all older Americans in our community, especially the frail and elderly, receive the resources and services they need to live out their lives in a supportive and dignified manner. And whereas, the city of Simi Valley recognizes the 2023 Older Americans Month theme, Aging Unbound, which encourages our city's older residents to push past traditional boundaries as they age and seize possibilities for adventure and growth. Now, therefore, the month of May 2023 is hereby proclaimed Older Americans Month in the city of Simi Valley in recognition of the many contributions that older Americans make to our city, presented this first day of May 2023.
I'm really proud of our city and all the things that we do to support our senior population, and I know the Council of Agen is a big part of that, and we appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 1D2, Presentation of a Proclamation Declaring the Month of May 2023 as Motorcycle Awareness Month. And Chief of Police Shorts is here to present this item.
Good evening. May 2023 is Motorcycle Awareness Month. Whereas, motorcycle riding is a popular form of recreation and efficient transportation for more than 1,200,000 people in the state of California. And whereas, the safety of distracted drivers, not checking their blind spots or using their turn signals when changing lanes are of prime concern to motorcycles. And whereas, it is especially important that the citizens of Simi Valley be aware of motorcycles on the streets and highways and recognize the importance of motorcycle safety. And whereas, the American Brotherhood Aimed Toward Education, ABAY, of California is an organization that actively promotes safe operation, increased rider training, and increased motorists' awareness of motorcycles. And whereas, it is important to recognize the need for awareness on the part of all drivers, especially with regard to sharing the road with motorcycles, and remind riders to make themselves more visible to others. Now, therefore, the month of May 2023 is hereby proclaimed Motorcycle Awareness Month in the city of Simi Valley to encourage both motorcycle riders and automobile drivers to unite in the safe sharing of the road and to provide safe travel for all, presented this first day of May 2023.
Mr. Mayor, I think we have representatives of ABAY here that will accept this.
Well, hi there. Hello, everybody. Welcome. 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 Very nice to meet all of you. So I know this is important. Having owned and ridden a motorcycle once upon a time, the very last time I rode that motorcycle, I came within inches of possibly losing my life because of a distracted driver that didn't see me, at which point I sold my bike. So, but yeah, it is important, and I have personally witnessed at least three occasions where somebody was knocked off their bike. So, good for you being here, we appreciate it. Let's just, I'm going to stand in the middle here, and we'll get a nice photo.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 1D3, Presentation of a Proclamation Declaring May 4, 2023, as Day of Prayer. And Management Analyst Heidi, Management Analyst Heidi D'Nardo is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and members of the City Council. It's my pleasure and honor, actually, to read the following proclamation. But before I begin, I would like to ask Dr. Clifton Clark to please come up to the podium to accept the following proclamation. It reads, whereas National Day of Prayer was created in 19... Yep, you stay right there, we're going to celebrate this day, okay? And whereas National Day of Prayer was created in 1952 by a joint resolution of Congress and signed into law by President Harry S. Truman. And whereas, in 1988, legislation was unanimously ratified by both Houses of Congress and signed by President Ronald Reagan stating that the National Day of Prayer was to be observed on the first Thursday of every May. And whereas, the Simi Valley faith community, through the coordination of the Simi Valley pastors' prayer gathering, pray for grace upon the community, our city leaders, school board members, area businesses, schools, and the spiritual needs of the community. And whereas, it is an opportunity for the faith community to encourage unity among the churches and faith-based nonprofit organizations to be a viable resource to the city. Now, therefore, the city of Simi Valley hereby proclaims May 4, 2023, as Day of Prayer, which gives all of us residents of our community an opportunity to continue to offer thanks and acknowledge all who work so hard on behalf of the citizens of our city, and to observe this day in ways appropriate to its importance and significance, presented this first day of May 2023. Thank you.
Thank you, once again. And can I just say that on behalf of the church in Simi Valley, we are committed to praying for...
And Mayor, if I'm, Mayor, if, over here, Councilmember, if I might just add too, I wanted to be sure to invite all those, there's, on the morning of this Thursday, National Day of Prayer, there's a beautiful event at Cal Lutheran from 7:30 to 9:30, open to the public, where there'll be faith leaders and community leaders, and I will actually be there representing Simi Valley, but I wanted to invite everyone to please come gather for breakfast and to worship, pray together for this tremendous community that we live in. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 1D4, Presentation of a Proclamation Declaring the Month of May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month. And Deputy Community Services Director Anna Medina is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and members of the City Council. This evening, we are recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness Month. To accept the proclamation, I would like to ask the following individuals to come forward. Maya Zamaya. Maya is one of the co-founders of the First Responders for Mental Health Initiative and a member of the National Alliance on Mental Illness, or NAMI. Abhishek Jagannathan. AJ is our Youth Council Vice Chair, as well as the Chair of the Mental Health Committee. The proclamation reads, whereas developing and maintaining healthy physical and mental habits are an essential component of a healthy community. And whereas, while one in five people will experience a mental illness during their lifetime, everyone faces challenges in life that can impact their mental health. And whereas, misunderstandings exist about many mental illnesses in our culture. Yet, attending to mental health is as important to a person's well-being as physical health. And whereas, serious mental illnesses have been scientifically proven to be highly treatable illnesses of the brain, are more common than cancer, diabetes, and heart disease, and are the number-one reason for hospital admissions nationwide. And whereas, with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. And whereas, each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen shares the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness. And whereas, the city of Simi Valley is committed to promoting a healthy community and encourages residents to visit simivalley.org/svmentalhealth to learn about valuable mental health services and resources available locally. And whereas, the Simi Valley Youth Council consistently works to increase awareness of mental health resources and decrease the stigma surrounding mental illness through multiple awareness campaigns, youth town halls, and a teen wellness night on May 19, 2023. Now, therefore, the month of May 2023 is hereby proclaimed Mental Health Awareness Month in the city of Simi Valley to increase public awareness of mental health, presented this first day of May 2023.
I think we see or hear each and every day in our lives the very reason why mental health is such a critical issue in our society today. So this is really important.
I would like to thank your very own Chief Shorts for being this year's honorary chair for the First Responders for Mental Health Initiative, which is a countywide effort that involves all first responders agencies to promote mental health awareness and host an event in their city during the month of May. So, when they put their event out, please be sure to go visit them whenever that's scheduled. And, young men, I would like to thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you. And we'd like to thank Mayor Thomas and the members of the City Council for acknowledging May as Mental Health Awareness Month. At the Youth Council, we constantly strive to create awareness about mental health resources and to create platforms for youth to discuss these issues, so this means a lot. And as was mentioned in the "whereas"s, during, the Youth Council is hosting our first-ever Wellness Fair on May 19, just outside City Hall at 5:30 PM, so we encourage everyone to come check it out. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 2, Public Statements on Appointments, Special Presentations, and Informational Reports. Speakers will be called on in the order in which a card was submitted to speak for this public statement, Item 2, for a period of no more than three minutes each. Persons addressing the City Council are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Mr. Mayor, we have one speaker card for this item. John Lapper?
Mayor Thomas and City Council, wow, what a wonderful proclamation today.
Who knew all four would be so relevant to my life in Simi Valley, Older Americans Month? I'm there for sure. And of course, Motorcycle Awareness Month and my desire to see more Simi Valley Police Department Motorcycle Traffic Officers safely patrolling our streets. Day of Prayer, yes, many have prayed for my salvation on Facebook. And lastly, Mental Health Awareness Month, which has been questioned by many of my adversaries on Facebook. All kidding aside, I appreciate the City Council taking time to recognize these important happenings in our community. Live, laugh, love, and pray for a healthy community. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is Item 3A1, Selection of One City Council Member to Serve on the Interview and Nomination Panel for Returning Youth Council Members, and Anna Medina is presenting this item as well.
Good evening, again, Mayor Thomas and members of the City Council. The Youth Council is comprised of 21 members and three alternates in grade 7 through 12, who advise the City Council on issues of concern to local youth. The next regular term of appointments is scheduled to commence on July 1, 2023. Up to nine of the 24 Youth Council members may be selected for reappointment. Eighteen Youth Council members are eligible for reappointment. Therefore, it is estimated that approximately two and a half hours will be needed to conduct the interviews. Mayor Protem Judge most recently served on the interview and nomination panel last June. It is recommended that the City Council select one City Council member to serve on the interview and nomination panel for prospective returning Youth Council members to fill up to nine positions on the Youth Council. The panel will also include the Youth Council Coordinator and up to two non-returning Youth Council members. These members are recommended for reappointment, will be eligible to interview the new Youth Council applicants following the subcommittee's nomination. This concludes the report, and staff is available to answer any questions at this time.
I don't have any questions, but I, and I appreciate all the work. Actually, I was going to make a statement that I know that this is going to be a terribly difficult assignment because all 18 are wonderfully qualified, and whoever does this will have to narrow it down to nine. And so, anyway, so I'm not volunteering. I just want to acknowledge the difficulty that, and I think I did it the year before Councilmember Judge, or Mayor Protem Judge did. Anyway, so I, I just wanted to put it out there that, right now, that all 18 are deserving, but, and they're all outstanding. But it will be a wonderful afternoon spent with whomever does the interviewing, so... If Councilmember Rhodes wants to volunteer...
So, would it be inappropriate to nominate Elaine at this time?
I am willing to serve there, but whoever would like to, I think...
I thought, I thought Ms. Councilmember Rhodes wanted to, no? I was just thinking, since you haven't done it yet, and the rest of us have. And it's very hard.
I move that Councilmember Rhodes is our representative to bring back the Youth Council members.
I'll second that. And he will do an outstanding job. I want, it really, it really is an outstanding organization. We don't want you to think we're shirking it, it's just we've done it, and we want them all.
All right, so call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the public statements from the first 10 persons who have submitted speaker cards. After the first 10 persons have spoken, subsequent persons who submitted speaker cards will be called on to speak during Agenda Item Number 6, which is a continuation of Agenda Item Number 4. Agenda Items Numbers 4 and 6 are the times allotted for public statements on all items other than public hearings, appointments, and informational reports. Speakers will be called on in the order in which a card was submitted to speak for this public statement, Item 4, for no more than three minutes each. Persons addressing the City Council are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Mr. Mayor, unless you have any other comments, we can begin public statements.
Please proceed.
The first speaker is Maria Arachiga.
Hi, thank you for hearing me tonight. My name is Maria Arachiga. I live here in Simi Valley. My neighborhood is from Yosemite to Stern, south of Los Angeles Avenue. My issue is a homeless woman by the name of Arlene Stone. She is a homeless addict. She is most active in the evenings, from around 7 o'clock at night to 7:00 in the morning, in which disrupts most of my neighborhood, who live along the wash and the bike paths, hours of sleep. She is verbally abusive. She screams, think of any vile words that you could possibly think of. Those are the words that come out of her mouth. I will refrain from using any of those. There are two homes on our street, one both in proximity to Catherine Elementary School. One is right across from the school, the other is two houses south of Stowe on Catherine. These houses do cater to the homeless. One of the homes does have a trailer on their driveway, which we have homeless people living in it. They also have an abundance of hoarding going on at those homes, and these homes Arlene does frequent because they do provide drugs. This is a known issue with the Police Department. We do call the police when she starts screaming, because you can hear it coming long before you see her. And if you were to look at my address, which is on the card, you will see my proximity to where she hangs out, which is at the end of Stern's, and up against the train tracks in a corner there, where she sleeps, urinates, changes her clothes. I am not the first person that has seen her naked on that bike path. This bike path is used by our children to go to school. I have witnessed this woman screaming at the top of her lungs, scaring this little boy, trying to get junior high. And he had to pull off Stern's, wait outside the gated fence, while I watched from my yard, waiting for her to calm down, and hopefully this little boy, who I'm sure his parents told him, please take the bike path and not on the major roads. It's becoming to the point where I, even the people that walk those routes, it's not fun for them anymore. She leaves trash, the city comes regularly, come clean up after her. That corner needs to be power washed, it reeks of urine, not to mention the other drug addicts that come to that corner as well. The Ventura Transit Company really needs to trim the trees along that bike path in order to not encourage them from hanging out. And that's about, oh, just have a couple minutes. I have been told by the Police Department to get a restraining order, however, I was also told by a police officer who came onto a call that, good luck with us enforcing it, since it's public property. So, I feel like my hands are tied, and so is my neighborhood's. Thank you.
Aubrey Alvarez?
Okay, I didn't know, okay. Good evening. I want to thank you all for allowing me to speak here. My name is Aubrey Alvarez, and I have been a resident of Simi Valley since I was 10. I grew up in the neighborhood of Catherine Elementary, and am now raising my own children there. It used to be a safe and quiet area, but we have a problem now, and her name is Arlene Stone. Simi Valley Police Department is very familiar with her, as is the Ventura County Jail system. She frequents the bike path at Stern Street, as well as Catherine Street, across from my daughter's elementary school. She is homeless, suffers from drug addiction, and mental health issues. I am here tonight to ask for help. My household and my neighbors are suffering. We are disturbed, day after day. We are woken up night after night by her rants of obscene and racist language, sexual language, and very aggressive behavior. My children are afraid to play in their own front yard and backyard because of what she does. We can't sleep, and she is now bringing additional individuals to the area to use drugs, camp out under the trees where they litter and use it as their bathroom. We call Simi Valley Police Department. They merely ask her to leave, and she's back hours later. I ask that you make changes to ensure we are leading by example and promoting a safe community. We are desperate. We need our city and our Police Department to get control of this growing homeless problem. I came here today straight from work, at a medical office on the other side of Simi, where we're having the same problem. I treat a lot of elderly, and they are scared to come get the care that they deserve because of what is going on. Please give us peace of mind to feel safe and undisrupted within our own homes and businesses, because this is not the Simi Valley that we used to be, nor is it the Simi Valley we should be, or the Simi Valley that we could be. Thank you for your time.
Jessica Anixteen?
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and Councilmembers. My name is Jessica Anixteen, and I'm a caseworker at the Samaritan Center. I wanted to let you know about some exciting fundraisers we have coming up. This coming Saturday, May 6, we'll be at the Simi Valley Street Fair. Our booth will be selling tickets to the Canyon Club in Agora Hills. You can buy six pairs of concert tickets for $35, and 100% of the proceeds will benefit the, whoa, will benefit the Samaritan Center. Pretty amazing, right? On Saturday, May 13, we'll be hosting our first annual hiking fundraiser to Mount McCoy Cross. Meeting Point is at 8:00 AM at the Wood Ranch Pavilions. The hike is family and dog-friendly. We brought some flyers, and I'll leave them with you for more information on how to sign up. Details can also be found on our Facebook page at Samaritan Center, or feel free to give us a call. We would be honored if some of you can join us on the hike and lunch. Thank you for your time and all of your support.
John Lapper?
Mayor Thomas and City Council, Motorcycle Traffic Officers for Simi Valley PD. I have spoken to both Chief Shorts and Mayor Thomas about the need for having more than one motorcycle officer in Simi. I've been told it's in the works. What is the process? Will it be included in the upcoming Simi Valley PD and city budget that will be available May 23? I asked Ventura County Sheriff Freihoff how many motorcycle traffic officers he had in the Thousand Oaks area. He said he believed there were seven. We currently have one to patrol 40 square miles in Simi Valley, and Chief Shorts told me Simi Valley PD has two fully-equipped motorcycles in the Police Department garage, ready to go. Agenda Item 7-9, Econolite Systems Contract Extension for $580,000. Again, why no bid process? Second question is, what did the city get for the current two-year contract for traffic signal repairs that apparently used up the budget, thus $82,400 to install? Is there an itemized list of what Econolite provided the city during the current contract period to maintain our traffic light system? Agenda Item 9A, Automated Police License Plate Reader and Camera Subscription for $238,050. Regarding the flock camera system policy, what is, what are the protocol used by Simi Valley PD for use of the flock camera system? How does it respond? For example, take the recent tragic stabbing incident at Walmart. Could the license plate and vehicle type have been immediately loaded in the flock system and match a detection immediately? Or is the flock camera used after the fact for investigative purposes? Also, how can the homeowner associations tap into the system as mentioned in staff report? Lastly, to my District 4 Councilman Rocky Rhodes, once again, I will offer you the opportunity to bury the hatchet and right a wrong by answering a simple question, yes or no. If I am nominated to represent District 4 on the Neighborhood Council, will you vote for my appointment and respond to my concerns as a constituent of yours? Thank you, John Lapper, Simi Valley resident.
Sharon Cordray?
Good evening, I'm Sharon Cordray, and I also live on Catherine Street, and I was just talked to them the other day regarding Arlene Stone. The language, I can't even walk on my street anymore. I have elderly parents that they, she keeps yelling at them. I go to bed at 8:00. I get up at 3:30 to go to work. I came here just to say that you can't sleep. The words that come out of her mouth, she's throwing things, clothes, she's walking around naked. There's so much, I mean, the police don't, they just go, can't do anything about it. So, I'd like to see if something can happen. I've been here for 36 years in Simi Valley, on Catherine Street. My children were raised there. My son's a police officer in Texas now. He moved from Simi. Because of the homeless, the crime, he didn't want to raise his children here anymore. So, I'd just like to see if we can do something to get the help for her. Maybe she needs to go to another home, or find something that she can, because she's bringing all kinds of homeless people over there on there. So, I hope we can do something. Thank you.
Joe Pachowski?
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn, Mayor Thomas, and members of the City Council. I wanted to speak tonight because I know that the sanitation rates are up again, and I've spoke on this one, on this before. It's a rather outrageous increase, in my opinion. In looking at the, at the comparison that the city staff provided, we're moving farther and farther away from, from our neighbor, Thousand Oaks. Thousand Oaks charges their residents, you know, about $31 a month for their, for their single-family homes. And we're up to 51. We're closer to LA, the city of Los Angeles now, than we were, than we are Thousand Oaks. You know, I just think that, that the way that, uh, single-family homeowners are being socked with this, with this charge is just, is just ridiculous. We just had one last year, and we're getting socked with another 8% charge. You know, I'd like to encourage you all to, to reconsider. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 4A, City Council Comments Regarding Public Statements.
Councilmember Litzger?
Thank you, Mayor Thomas. I, I find it very ironic that we have, that we have members of the, of our community speaking with concern about homeless, homeless person and people in particular, and we also have the Samaritan Center here, talking about their fundraiser. And I think it speaks to a lot of the concern of what our community has. And I, and I do the three, I don't, we don't have any, I don't know that we have an answer for it, but I'm sure that we will continue our discussion. We can't address immediately a specific issue, but certainly will continue speaking with the police and find, and, and the Samaritan Center and see what help can be given, because that, the desire is certainly not to have such a difficult experience in your community. And I personally know what you speak. My office is near that, near where you live, and I have seen her. So, I know exactly what you speak, and so. But anyway, I, let's start by supporting the Samaritan Center with their fundraiser. So, thank you for being here this evening. Mr. Lapper, thank you for your reading the agenda so thoroughly, and we always appreciate your comments and involvement. Mr. Pachowski, interesting you should bring that up. It is on our consent calendar, and I have given it some real thought, because initially, when it was brought before us, I, at the time, felt very strongly we should have a bond issue issuance, because it is a 30-year sanitation issue that we are funding, as opposed to increasing the rates. I don't, at that time, it was voted to increase the rates at a, at a, at a step rate, et cetera, but I'm going to keep considering and thinking about your comments. So, I appreciate your concern there. And those are my comments for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say to the people who came out to speak, and, and you may know this already, we don't get to address your problems directly, but that doesn't mean you weren't heard. And for Maria, Aubrey, and Sharon, we heard that, and we'll see what we can do about that. Jessica, thank you for coming to speak, and thank you for what you do at this Samaritan Center, and hopefully we can get you some additional support as well. Appreciate, we appreciate you and what you do. And, Mr. Pachowski, yes, we will be discussing that rate increase. And that's all my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Judge?
Sorry, it's on. What was wrong with it? Anyways, I mean, I've received many complaints about this woman, and I forwarded them to the police every time. And I feel your frustration, being a former police officer myself, and I feel the Police Department's frustration. We are going to find a way to work this out. I don't, I'm not sure how, and I'm not sure the police can even answer that right now. It's going to take some creative work on their part, but we will try. We're not going, like, like Councilmember Rhodes said, we heard you. Thank you.
Yeah, on that same issue, I think what we will do is request that the Police Department provide us some type of a report on, on the history of that issue, and, and some suggestions on what we can do moving forward. I know we have a vulnerable population detective that, you know, can possibly address that issue, but we will follow through on that. And thank you, everybody, for bringing your concerns and your, and your opinions on issues today. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Public Hearings. This is a time for testimony on public hearings, on public hearings on the consideration of matters as presented on this agenda. That the record show that due notice was given as required by law, and an affidavit to this effect is on file in the office of the City Clerk. All comments submitted by email have already been provided to the City Council and will be made part of the record. However, they will not be read by the clerk this evening. Speakers will be called on in the order in which a card was submitted for this public testimony, Item 5, for a period of no more than five minutes each. Persons addressing the City Council are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Comments shall be made, shall be limited to matters relevant to the item on the agenda, and may be ruled out of order if comments are unrelated to the item. The reports of city staff relating to these matters shall be made part of the record of this meeting. If you challenge in court, any of the City Council decisions made here tonight, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at this public hearing. The time within which judicial review must be sought is governed by California Code of Civil Procedure Section 1094.6. Agenda Item 5A, A Public Hearing on the Community Development Block Grant allocations and Draft Fiscal Year 2023-24 Action Plan, and Senior Management Analyst Julia Ramirez is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. On March 13, the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee recommended that the City Council approve the draft action plan for fiscal year 2324, with the committee's preliminary funding recommendations. In CDPG, there are three categories of allowable expenditures: public service, capital improvements, and administration. Public service applications are funded on a two-year basis, with 2324 fiscal year being year one. This year, staff received a total of three applications, two for public services, and one for capital improvements. HUD has published the entitlement amounts for the 2324 fiscal year, and the city will receive $625,207. As required by HUD regulations, the draft action plan was released for a 30-day public review period effective March 31. The draft action plan contains the preliminary recommendations of the committee. It is recommended that the City Council adopt the committee's recommendation and make the final determination of projects and programs to be funded in the upcoming fiscal year, and authorize the submission of the action plan to HUD. This concludes staff's presentation, and we are available for questions.
Any questions of staff from Councilmembers, please. Councilmember Rhodes? Councilmember Litzger?
Councilmember Litzgerd?
Turn my mic on. Thank you. I, I appreciate this process and I just had a little bit of trying to understand better that the monetary application. I understand the Samaritan Center applied for $45,000, is that correct?
Yes.
And so my question is, I know that it is over two-year cycle, so does that mean in essence, it's a $90,000 application, 45 over two years, or is it 45 that is given over the two-year period?
It's 45 per year. They just don't have to apply on year two.
Gotcha, okay. So it would be a total of 90,000 over that time?
Correct.
Process. My, I also understand too that the total public service was about $93,781 is what's allotted.
Correct.
As the applicants totaled 63,787. So basically, there's approximately 30,000 that is going to be allocated elsewhere, away from the social service category.
Yes.
That's correct. My question actually is, I understand that the funds to Samaritan Center are going to help support possibly social services. Can, if there was still a need, can that, can that be amended at this point, for instance, and say, well, can the balance of those funds go to Samaritan Center or to modify that application? Is that reasonable or is that too late?
Well, we have a policy that the maximum that they can apply for is 45.
Okay.
And so they have applied for 45 and the committee did recommend the full allocation.
The full maximum, okay. And so, so it's the policy that limit, that dictates?
There is a maximum.
That amount. And that policy is set internally? Is it something that we've set? I just trying to understand.
It is.
It was, it's?
It was set by the City Council.
It was set by the City Council. So we have authority to change that if we wanted to, theoretically. I'm not, I'm not advocating that, I'm just asking, I'm just trying to understand.
I think the council's intent at that time was to maximize the number of applicants.
Understood.
So could the council change that policy? Absolutely you could.
And I like the policy, there's nothing wrong with the policy. We certainly want to benefit as many deserving entities in that, in that area as well. I'm just maybe, might, we might as, might consider modifying it in the instance when the, the full amount is not met. That would be maybe something we could consider in the future. I'm not, I'm not sure that I'm advocating it right now, I just want, knowing the need, just want to be sure it's being met. Those are my questions for now. Any?
I only have one question and that is, I noticed that there was two applications, but my recollection is, many times in the past, we had as many as like a dozen applications and I was just curious why so few this time?
There's a lot of organizations that come forth for our application workshop. Once we explain the process and HUD's requirements and regulations and all that they need to do, a lot of them choose not to apply. Just because something is CDPG eligible, it doesn't mean that this is the best funding source for them.
Okay, yeah, because I've, I've seen the amount of paperwork that's required, it is a lot, yes. Okay, thank you.
If, if I could maybe have a follow-up, follow-up, Mayor, then, thank you.
Go ahead.
I certainly think, if I understand the way this works, certainly all the funds get utilized for important things. If they don't get utilized for, in the social area, et cetera, it'll be ultimately used to help pave our roads and particularly in communities that are lower income. And so I, I understand it's money all well spent and it will be spent. I guess my question would be, would it, knowing that we have allocated this amount in the social arena and knowing that we have representation of Samaritan Center here, would there be any interest on the council to consider if they felt they could utilize those funds? Would, do allow this, an exception to that 45,000 cap? Is there any interest on the council in so doing?
If I can respond, love the Samaritan Center, also love filling potholes. And I think that extra funding going towards that function is a good use of those extra funds.
I agree at this time, again, major supporter of the Samaritan Center, but I think this is your budget for your case management, so we're meeting that need and, and I love that you guys do that too. For both of these allocations, I think we've met the required amount and which I'm glad and there is a little bit left over. I think if we want to look at that, we should discuss it for prior, or for progressive years, years in the future, so that we have something in place if there's, if there's excess or that we can decide to leave it where it is. I think staff did a good job on deciding what to do with the excess money and it is an area that this year we need exceptionally more so than other years possibly because of all the rain that we've had. So I, I think they, the committee did a great job and the applicants know what they're getting and they can work with that and Samaritan Center is very good at doing their paperwork. They've become very experienced in it. So I think it's a, it's a good allocation and I would like to leave the funding as noted in the staff report at this time.
And I'm not, I'm not arguing that it's all not necessary funds. Given the discussion that was just had, are you proposing then maybe, because this is a two-year cycle, we will not see this again for two years, if I understand correctly? Is that right?
We will not accept applications for public service for two years.
Correct.
Capital is yearly.
After this year. So it will be two full years before we will be able to address this, unless we chose to change it next year, for instance, and reallocate. It wouldn't change the applicants, but I guess we as a council could choose to reallocate. But otherwise, it's going to be two years. So I, what I'm hearing and sensing then, I would suggest, make a note, Brian, or whomever needs to, that when it comes to the HUD discussion, that I think that there's such a need with our homeless population that, that there may, that there, that we might consider, if there are not applicants that, that use up the entire social amount, we might consider, since we have allocated X amount to help social services, that we do what we can to truly utilize those funds for social services. So I would strongly encourage that we address this then before the next two years cycle starts again. And I'm not saying give one group more than another, but, but maybe utilize, look at changing that, that artificial cap that was placed by us in the first place.
If the council wants, wants that to return, we can certainly do that. That's not to say it would, the funds would always go to homeless services.
Oh, of course.
It could go to anyone.
There may be someone more deserving in two years that comes forward with.
Sure.
Understood, understood.
Up to the council, if they'd like to, us to bring that back, we certainly can.
I for one would like it.
Make a motion?
Please.
On the whole item?
On the whole item, because I figured it would be a future agenda item.
Okay, yeah, wait, hold, hold.
It's a public hearing.
Yes, yes. Okay. At this time, I would like to open the hearing for anyone in the City Council chambers wishing to be heard on this matter.
Mr. Mayor, we have no speaker cards for public testimony.
So this hearing is now closed. Any further comments or questions from City Council members? I will now entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee's funding recommendation and make the final determination of projects and programs to be funded in the fiscal year 2324 and authorize the submission of the fiscal year 2324 action plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Second.
Call for a vote?
The motion passes unanimously.
Please proceed to the next item.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 7, the Consent Calendar, and there are seven resolutions for your consideration this evening. Consent Item 10, Resolution Number 2023-19, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley pursuant to the provisions of the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972, evidencing the council's intention to levy assessments for the 2023-24 fiscal year on those lots within Simi Valley Landscape District Number One, describing the proposed improvements and ordering the engineer to prepare and file a report. Resolution Number 2023-20, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley approving the engineer's report for Simi Valley Landscape District Number One. And Resolution Number 2023-21, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley declaring its intention to pursuant to Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972, to levy and collect assessments on those lots of parcels within Simi Valley Landscape District Number One, describing the improvements and their location and fixing a time and place for, for and giving notice of public hearing by the City Council on the question of the levy of proposed assessments for the fiscal year of 2023-24. Consent Item 11, Resolution Number 2023-22, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley implementing a schedule of sanitation rates and fees and authorizing the County of Ventura to collect residential sanitation service rates on the tax roll for fiscal year 2023-24. Consent Item 12, Resolution Number 2023-23, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley amending the fiscal year 2023-24 budget to incorporate a list of projects funded by Senate Bill 1, SB 1, for fiscal year 2023-24, Cycle 7, the Road Repair and Accountability Act. Consent Item 13, Resolution Number WWD-293, a resolution for the Board of Directors of Ventura County Water Works District Number Eight, declaring a stage one water supply condition calling for voluntary conservation and rescinding Resolution WWD-291. And Consent Item 14, Resolution Number WWD-294, a resolution of the Board of Directors of Ventura County Water Works District Number Eight, establishing a water service standby charge for fiscal year 2023-24.
I'd like to pull consent item one, please.
Okay. Councilmember Litzgerd?
I would like to pull item number five and item number 13. Rocky, you had said you wanted to pull number 11, that was what Mr. Pachowski was talking about. Did you want, you said we were going to discuss it. Did you want to actually pull that?
Yeah, let's pull that and have just a quick discussion on it.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I move the rest of the consent calendar for approval.
Second.
Call for a vote?
That, yeah, that's fine. I'm sorry, I was going to ask, no, I was going to, I was just still looking at the list. Actually, can I, before, can I just find out, can we just quickly have something to discuss on number nine? Can we also pull that? I'm sorry. I wasn't going to, but based on something that was said in public comments, I think I'd like to pull number nine also. I apologize. Can we do that and then go back to the vote? I apologize.
Okay, so we need a motion excluding 1, 5, 9, 11 and 13.
So moved.
Call for a vote?
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, let's go in order then. Consent item number one.
On the minutes, I'm hoping that on the April 10 minutes for Item 5A, we can add something to reflect Joe Deacon's participation as his last item to present to council, just so it's memorialized.
We can certainly do that.
That was my only part of one.
Okay. Anything else on one? Okay. Item five.
Thank you. My question, I just wanted to understand better. This is, this has to do with transit and that, I understand that we had some, that basically that we purchased a module that allows us to count ridership but weren't able to actually utilize it because we had some staffing shortages. There were two employees that, that left, or at the time this was going to take place, if I read the report correctly. And so I'm not sure who wants to speak to this, but I guess my question is, do we have the manpower now that we can internally do that? That's the first question. And we're being asked to authorize $8,000 more to, in essence, have the company do the headcount, if I read that correctly. So does that mean we will, are they using the module that we purchased to do that? Will it be handled internally in the future? Those are just some of my questions about that item.
So yes, we do have the manpower. We are back staffed up. And I believe that the, the separate count is to make up for the count that we missed, is that correct, Ben? Yes. So it is using existing data to make up for the count that was not, that did not take place.
And we can't do that internally with?
They can do it a lot quicker and a lot easier.
Okay.
They have the, the manpower and the technology to do it rather than us handling it.
Okay. And so I guess that's, I want to make sure that the staffing shortage has been rectified and that's what I'm hearing, is yes, going forward, when we have the ability, we will be using that module, it wasn't wasted money spent. Is that accurate?
Correct. We're doing that going forward.
Going forward, we will be able to do that. This is just to make up basically for the staffing shortage that occurred and?
Yes, because our reporting requirements to the Fed require us to use that.
Got it, okay. Thank you, I just needed that clarification. Thank you.
Item nine?
So this is, I pulled this just at the very end, just maybe because of some of the questions that were asked by Mr. Lapper, I'd wanted to make it very clear that it's not unusual at all, as I understand, to extend contracts once we've made them and part of that contract is, is, if we find that they are performing well, it is not unusual to, to use the option of, of renewing the contract per the initial agreement. And so that's all this is, it's not a matter of, of not putting something out for bid because the contract has ended. Basically, that extension is automatic if, or can be if we choose to.
That's correct. We did bid it out two years ago, is that right? Two years ago, Econolite was awarded the contract. Within that contract, they also, we included extensions that we are now taking advantage of at the previously negotiated rate.
And I assume that we have been pleased with their performance, which is why we would choose to be renewing their contract?
Yes.
Or extending the contract, I should say, excuse me?
That's correct.
Okay. And the question was asked, and I, and actually I had looked at this before Mr. Lapper said anything, I did find it interesting that, that basically we were looking at more money to build, to have them install these cabinets, that basically $10,300 per cabinet installation was my calculation. Is, is that part of the original contract? Do they normally do that for us and, or is this, we're just asking to do something completely separate?
It's an add-on to the contract. They would normally be our, so the council also has approved Econolite as our sole source provider for traffic control cabinets. We have 121 intersections in the community. They have, we have acquired equipment for all 121 of them from Econolite. So we've previously designated them on the traffic control cabinets to be our sole source provider. So we're going to them, we need to replace these eight, we're going to them to amend this contract to replace eight of them.
Got it, and that's not itemized, that's not?
It's not included in the 5A.
Even though they, they initially provided the initial 121 or whatever it is, or?
Over the years.
Over the years.
That's what we have, yeah, we have found when we bid there, they are consistently the, the winning bidder and they provide a superior product. So now we have, we are at 121 intersections, all of them are Econolite boxes.
And, and the question I had is, does the contract specify what the cost will be if we ask them? I mean, is that part of the contract? In the future, as we bid our, bid, put the open bid process up, once the, you know, two or three years from now, once all the extensions are, are used up, is, would it be, would it behoove us then to have that be part of the, what's bid, I mean, as part of the contract?
So each year, we do go out and bid for additional boxes to be replaced. It's a standard item in our contract, in our budget where we budget for replacement of traffic. of traffic control cabinets. But the 580 that we're, that is for services, on-call services, for them to go out and fix, replace lights, replace traffic signals that are, have power outages, and now they're blinking red, and they're not going back to green, so we need to have, so they're on-call 24/7 to respond to our service needs over the next two period, two-year period. That's the 580. The 82 and change is, we need their additional services to replace these eight traffic control boxes.
I understand. And in those eight traffic control boxes, are they generally, in the future, would they be put out to open bid process, or no? That just is?
We normally do.
Okay.
But I will say that Econolite is our sole source, sole source provider on the boxes.
Got it. Fair enough. Okay. Thank you for that information.
Item 11.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is rookie questions, and I apologize for not asking these beforehand, but I see the rate increases, and, and I'm totally good with rate increases if that's what's needed to do this, but I had heard something about not issuing a bond, and that we were protecting against some future expense. Could I just get a brief explanation of these rate increases that was approved?
Sure. So this agenda item implements the council's action back in January of 2020 to implement a five-year program for funding the sanitation district. And these rates, the rates you're, the rates that are in the staff report represent what was approved in 2020 through a, through public hearings and notification to the public. The resolution you're adopting is primarily to allow for us to use the County of Ventura to collect the sanitation rates. So that's, that's what this staff report entails.
So these rates were known before this year, before this item? It was all figured in before?
They were known in December of 2019 and approved by the council in, in 2020. Yes.
Thank you.
And item 13.
So this is our water conversation, just quickly about, which, and I was pleased to read just the state of the water in California, specifically in the snowpack and the Sierras, et cetera, that was all part of the report. And just, and just for those who've not read it, basically, this, this particular item says that we are going to get rid of the Stage Two State of Emergency and just go to voluntary conservation, and with some stipulations of what that looks like. My question is, in the report, it says the state is still mandating that non-functional turf, commercial turf, industrial turf, institutional HOA property turf, et cetera, not be watered. That's how I read it. And so I'm trying, I, maybe I missed, is that, was that a California law that was, was that something passed that I was, that was not actually, that I'm not aware of?
That's an order that the governor implemented that has not been rescinded. Is that correct, Wanda?
You are correct. Emergency.
Hold on. Come on down. We got to get you on the microphone.
We want you part of this conversation, recorded for posterity.
Sorry about that. Brian's correct. It is an emergency water conservation regulation that the governor decided not to rescind. And so either it will sunset, or he will extend it, or the state will make it a permanent requirement. And I know that there is a lot of interest in that from, you know, a lot of the water agencies and the state water board, because of the fact that that's where most of the water use is, is watering the grass. And so I expect that there will be more action on that at some point in the future by the state.
And, and so you, this is a government executive order, basically, right now?
Correct.
What is, is there sunset clause built into it right now? And when is that, if it is? Do you happen to know?
It may be the end of June.
I'm sorry, I'm totally putting you on the spot. I apologize.
There's, there was, yeah, the end of June, I believe.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That's, I just wanted to understand why that was being specified in this, that?
And so the resolution was, was written so that we will not have to take any action? Because it will just automatically go away if he doesn't extend it?
Is that, I guess I didn't see that in the resolution, but maybe, okay, if that's how it reads. It looked to me like it read, everything, we're doing all of this, but the staff recommends we don't do this. But the resolution is slightly different. It says sunset, or that we would follow the governor's?
The resolution basically says to end the two designated watering days.
Correct.
Got it.
So we're still waiting for the governor to make the decision if it remains permanent or not.
Fair enough.
There are still issues with Colorado water.
Of course.
And everything else that could?
Of course. Yeah. Okay. So the resolution specifically?
Takes us back to?
Stage one.
Without water.
Water supply condition.
Yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
I just wanted to make a comment. I'm in Golden State Water, and we received notice today that they are keeping us on two-day-a-week watering. Are you aware of that, Brian?
I've heard that they were talking about that.
I got an email today.
I mean, Cuyahoga and Metropolitan Water District are moving, have, have moved away from that.
I know, I was surprised. It came in, and it's, if you're odd and even, you get certain days of the week for watering.
We received an email from the general manager that said that they were, you know, they have to go through the PUC process, that takes generally at least a month, and that their intention was to have that rescinded in June.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. I'm glad I brought it up then. Thank you.
They tend to be a little bit behind us on that, yeah.
They're not lucky enough to have a council like us.
So true. Thank you, Wanda.
All right, then, I need a motion to approve the?
I move to approve item one, five, nine, 11, and 13.
Actually, I'm sorry. I would like 11 separated, because I, I'm actually going to vote, just following what I voted back two years ago, to oppose that, so.
All right.
Okay, I move to approve item one, five, nine, and 13.
Second. Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve item 11.
Second. Call for a vote. I did it. It went away.
Mayor Potem, Judge? The motion passes for consent item 11 with Councilmember Lister Vodino. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is item 8A, adoption, adoption of a resolution modifying a job classification included in the confidential designated employee group, and adoption of a resolution revising the terms and conditions of employment for confidential designated employees. The reading of the resolutions is as follows. Resolution number 2023-18, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley, amending Resolution 2021-50 to delete the confidential designated classification of deputy city manager and related salary range. And Resolution number 2023-24, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley, establishing terms and conditions of employment for confidential designated employees, and repealing Resolution 2021-51 and previous resolutions to the extent that they are in conflict herewith. And Senior Human Resources Analyst Shannon Nash is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and City Council members. The item for you encompasses a change in one of the confidential management job titles, and proposed revisions to the terms and conditions to the resolution for confidential designated employees. Beginning with the 2021 negotiation cycle, the City Council determined it would remove employees that are involved with the bargaining process on behalf of the city from the non-represented management group, and place them into their own group of confidential employees. The goal of this action was to remove the perception of any self-dealing on behalf of the negotiation team members. Those positions currently include city manager, city attorney, administrative services director, deputy human resources director, deputy city manager, a human resources, senior human resources analyst, and a senior assistant city attorney. These seven positions were not recipients of the package provided to management designated employees, as outlined in Resolution number 2023-13, adopted at the April 3 City Council meeting. Due to a promotion earlier this year for one of the members of this group, staff recommends replacing the deputy city manager title with the title of assistant city manager through the proposed adoption of Resolution number 2023-18. Secondly, staff recommends that the compensation benefits and terms of employment for those employees contained in Resolution number 2023-13 for the management designated group be similarly provided to this confidential designated group through the proposed adoption of Resolution 2023-24. This item was introduced at a regular meeting of the City Council on April 10 to provide transparency and solicit public consideration comment prior to the matter on tonight's agenda. To date, no public comments have been received on this item. The resolution affecting the terms and conditions of employment for you is a 26-month term that includes two separate increases totaling 10% over the next two years. A 6% salary increase effective May 8, and a 4% salary increase effective May 6. The Simi Flex amount will remain at the 2023 plan year level with no adjustment during the term of the resolution. The slide above shows the total cost for the adjustments to be $150,839.60 to the general fund. The slide also breaks down the cost of each year of the agreement, and how much cost is attributed to salary versus that of hers. At this time, it is recommended that the City Council adopt both proposed resolutions as presented for the outlined revisions related to the confidential designated group. This concludes staff presentation, and I would be available for questions.
Do we have any questions of staff?
Would you like a motion? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. I move to adopt Resolution number 2023-18, deleting the confidential designated classification of deputy city manager and related salary range, and adding the classification of assistant city manager and related salary range to the confidential designated group. I also move to adopt a resolution approving revisions to the terms and conditions of employment for confidential designated employees. In accordance with Government Code Section 3511-11, excuse me, Government Code Section 3511 dot one, a summary of these benefits for the various positions identified below is reported as follows. For the positions of city manager, city attorney, assistant city manager confidential, and administrative services director, revisions to pay ranges and compensation unless specified under individual contracts are as follows. Effective May 8, 2023, a 6% cost of living adjustment that includes adjustments to pay ranges will be implemented. Effective May 6, 2024, a 4% cost of living adjustment that includes adjustments to pay ranges will be implemented. All other prior benefit levels remain the same.
If I, I'm sorry, if I can just make sure, we also have Resolution 2023-20-24?
I thought the second part, I also move to adopt, included that, but I can read that.
Let's read that, just to make sure.
Okay, I, to add in, we adopt Resolution number 2023-24, approving revisions to the terms and conditions of employment for confidential designated employees.
Thank you.
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 9A, authorization to waive the bidding process, approve sole source justification, and award of contract for the police department to purchase automated license plate reader, ALPR, and camera subscription from Flock Group Incorporated, DBA Flock Safety, in an amount not to exceed $238,050. And Chief of Police Short is presenting this item.
Good evening, Mayor Fred Thomas and Mayor Potem, my counsel.
We're going to go ahead and go forward with the presentation, based on some of the comments that we heard during public comment regarding the Flock system. What I'd like to open up and say is that the Flock's automated license plate reader system and camera system will enhance the effectiveness and efficiency of the police department, and investments in technological assets increase public safety by providing proactive policing and investigative tools. I've got with me today Commander Craig Duggan and Sergeant Patrick Zaycheck, that are going to be able to explain the system and answer any policy questions. And with that, Patrick, go ahead.
All right, thank you. I'm excited to be here to discuss a tool that I believe will make our police department better, our community safer, and a tool that will provide investigative leads for detectives and patrol officers alike. And with that, I proudly present LPR Flock System, which is an LPR camera system. So most importantly, what is it? What is Flock LPR? So it's a license plate reader system. It is fixed, it is deployable, and is also self-sufficient, it is solar-powered. Importantly, this is not new technology. In 2011, some of our SVPD patrol units were equipped with license plate readers, so we do currently have these. These are on top of our patrol units. We started with three, we currently have one still in the fleet. So not new tech, just a different type of tech. So what does this tech do? What is it? So it's a license plate recognition software. It gathers objective evidence and facts about vehicles, and importantly, not about people, vehicle-specific. The police can get alerts of wanted vehicles, and it has many tools that can be used to solve various types of crime. And here's a picture of an actual Flock LPR image. Obviously, I blacked out the license plate. So just as important as what this is, is what it isn't. This is not facial recognition. It is not tied to personal identifiable information. It's not used for any type of immigration or traffic enforcement, and this data automatically deletes every 30 days. So it is not this, it is vehicle-specific. So with Flock, we currently have access to Flock cameras. We have 1,400 cameras that are being shared with us from other departments, many of those listed. We are currently using Flock investigatively by the data we're receiving from other agencies. And another component of Flock is Flock also has the ability to reach out to HOAs, to business centers, and if those HOAs and those business centers do decide to produce or to purchase these cameras, they can then share these cameras with the police department. We obviously don't share our data back with them. We can share with other agencies, as other agencies, other agencies share with us. So currently, we have access to 1,400 cameras already. All right, so that was kind of globally in California. Ventura County agencies, who's using this? So right now, Ventura County is using it. Ventura PD has been using it for the last three years. Port Huaynimi is using it, and kind of in the same boat as us right now. You have Oxnard and Santa Paula, which are both looking to implement these cameras as So how does this make us better? How does this make us safer? How does this make us safer? Substantial increase in investigative leads. I've been on the department for about 20 years, I've spent about 10 of that in investigations, and I wish I had this tool when I was in an investigation. Oftentimes, we will get crime alerts, crime broadcasts, investigations where we're having, we get partial plates, we get vehicle descriptions only, and oftentimes, those cases would go inactive because we had nothing else to work off, have no leads. This could potentially provide those leads that we didn't have before. Like I said, partial plates, vehicle colors, makes, bumper stickers, there's a lot of different data you could enter into this. Alerts, active alerts on stolen vehicles and plates, patrol officers, dispatch, detectives could all get these alerts. The ability to flag vehicles associated with criminal activity. I currently work in property crimes. We could enter plates that are associated with catalytic converter theft crews, organized retail theft. Even in the narcotics world, they could enter plates on potential fentanyl dealers if they so choose to do. And there's a lot of different data that we can enter where we could get those live, this person is in our town right now, type hit. And with that, I open it up to any questions.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm a fan of the technology, but you said something detective in the, in the beginning that raised an eyebrow. You said that we had three of these units deployed initially on patrol cars, but now only one. Is this as a result of breakage? And if so, is there a life expectancy of these things? And if so, is there a warranty on these items?
Yes, we actually have a representative from Flock here. We have Hector in the crowd with us today as well. These are maintained by Flock. This is an annual subscription that we pay, and we've obviously paid for four years or we're looking to pay for four years upfront. The tech is a little different. The mobile readers we had were vigilant, so that's when you're driving around a patrol car, it's capturing plates. This is, the Flock system is more of an ingress egress type camera system that will give us those notices of people coming in and people leaving. Where they work hand in hand, the vigilant system, because we use that all the time to help us potentially find these people when they're at 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 in the morning where you could kind of, what they use as bed someone down, find out where they're coming from and where they're committing those crimes from. That's what the vigilant LPR mobile data system is designed for. Commander Duggan could probably answer the question about why we have one versus the three that we initially started with.
Your, your observation is actually correct. Like, we purchased these camera systems, and over time, they deteriorate, and if we don't budget for, you know, getting the new technology, we end up with less. In this, in this contract that we're entering into, it's, it's subscription-based, so Flock is going to be taking care of all of the equipment. There's really no infrastructure issues that we have to deal with. We don't have to, you know, get internet connection to, to any of these poles. It's powered, self-sufficient, so there's no electrical connection that we have to create. So the system that we're getting is, is self-sufficient, and, and if a camera breaks, Flock's going to come out and fix it.
Then the technology turns over so quick, which is why when you, we were talking about body worn cameras several years ago and some of the other items, it's better to be on a subscription system that includes the hardware being replaced within the contract.
Thank you, I have no other questions.
Councilmember Litzner.
Thank you. I appreciate the presentation and appreciate you bringing this item before us. What is your response to a citizen who is concerned about their privacy being violated? You says, you say that it doesn't show, you showed us the picture of the vehicle and blacked out, it's not being used to identify people. Can it be used to identify people?
It cannot. You cannot enter, there's no place where you can enter color, hair color, eye color, size of people. It doesn't capture that. It is specifically designed for vehicles and vehicles alone.
Okay, thank you. And I had someone ask, is this going to lead us to installation where we would be, it could be used for picking up traffic violations, like a California stop, you leak, you know, or, you know, running a red light, et cetera. I mean, can this technology be used for that? I know that's not the intention. Is it designed that it could be used for that? And will it be used for that? Or could it be used for that?
With the wrong intent, it could. The intent of the department is to not use it for any type of traffic enforcement whatsoever.
Which I appreciate that. Is it being used for that purpose elsewhere?
No, it doesn't have that capability. Yeah, the technology you're talking about is vastly different with a lot of different requirements. This is, this is very centered on one specific type of use.
Excellent. And I also understand that this, explain to me that this ties to our Axon, our body cameras that we've already invested in, or that, at least in the report, it said something about the connection. Can you explain that to us?
Right, so the way this system works is very much centered on, on the here and now, right? So when something's happening now, we can act immediately. And when we identify particular individuals, or, excuse me, vehicles and the subsequent people that are driving them, potentially with stolen property such as catalytic converters or what have you, we will take that information, we'll have to take the image and the data that Flock produces for us, and we have to store it somewhere in evidence for prosecution. And that's the ease with which the connection with Axon makes it for us. So once we identify a particular type of criminals, we take that data, book it into evidence with, with relative ease. There's no need to like download it and put it on disk or, or anything like that. We're just storing it in a digital system. Just, it's, it's just much more efficient.
Got it. And I, I like the fact that this is coming from forfeited asset, asset or funds, I understand, forfeit assets. And secondly, well, let me ask specifically, I understand that we don't store, that, that it is, Flock stores the data for a month, is that correct? And then we, you, and I guess my question is, as you need access to something, you basically contact them, they, you, you receive that information you need, is that, is that accurate? Or it's just automatically computer-generated? Yeah, I need this, tell me what happened at 4 o'clock at this intersection?
Yes, so Flock does store that data for the 30 days it overwrites. So I currently have access to their website, which I log into, and I enter, and obviously I can search for the 30-day period. I can enter vehicle plates into that website and search for images that were found, at least within the 1,400 cameras we have access to right now.
Is there an additional fee for as many times as you need to access, or is it, this is all-inclusive? Anytime you want to get information, you can do so. There's not additional because you, you get 500 lookups and 501, you start charging you more? I mean.
Yeah, I use it quite a bit, and I'm glad there isn't.
Okay.
Because it would get really expensive, because it's, it's a great tool.
Gotcha, okay. And then just one more question, please. I understand from the report that these will be mounted in, as you said, egress, ingress high activity, so I assume freeway, on-ramps, off-ramps, that area. It also mentions maybe higher crime areas of the city, maybe, possibly. I'm not asking you to tell us where you're going to mount these, because that may or may not be a good thing. But is, is that an accurate description of where these would be likely mounted?
Absolutely, and there'll be different phases if we were to purchase more down the road. Initially, the security blanket of the city is most important to us, so those ingress egress points. Obviously, we have to work with or work around Caltrans, because there's certain poles that we can't touch, and we can't put cameras on the freeway.
Very good, okay. I think you've answered my questions and concerns, thank you very much.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Councilmember Litzner's last question was kind of where I was going with this, so the egress and the ingress. And I was going to ask, can you use them in the highly criminal areas, which I just found in the report also? Do, so they can be moved?
There is a deployable tool within that. I believe we're, we're looking at getting, getting one of those, but most of them are fixed locations.
Okay. Because there, there could be an area we're having high crime right in this area, robberies or something, burglaries overnight, and you could potentially do something there.
Correct.
Correct, okay.
Such information, based on objective criteria, there's no selective.
Oh, sorry.
Absolutely.
Have to listen to the city attorney. Include all that information.
That's a correct statement.
All right, that, that was just, do we know approximately how many this is purchasing? Or are we keeping that kind of under wraps?
I believe it's in the report, and there was 23.
I missed it then, okay, okay, thank you.
The, the bottom line is, what we're doing is we're, we're going from one mobile unit on a car to several fixed locations, and we have the ability to increase our footprint. And as you're reading on the news every day regarding catalytic converters, organized retail theft, knock-knock burglaries, commercial burglaries, it's simply, it's, it's a force enhancer. We're going to actually have better coverage, and we're going to have immediate proactive information. There's stories, and I don't want to mention jurisdictions, but nearby where a stolen car hits in one city and two cities over, it hits again within that, hits within the system, and they're able to take people in custody. So it's an excellent, excellent tool.
I, I think it's wonderful, and I think it's something you guys, you, the department, will, will utilize well. Even though you're doing so well on the organized retail crimes, do you really need anything else?
We try.
Just congratulations on all of those catches. That's it, thank you.
All right, one last question. So you're going to use it to solve crime. What about vandalism and theft of the equipment itself? Is it insured? Are we responsible for it?
Yeah, I think if, you know, our representative from Flock may, may be able to answer that, but that's my understanding, is they, they're responsible for the equipment.
Right, and we don't really want to get into the security measures on the system.
Okay, that's fine.
I would love to make.
Councilmember Litzner.
I just want to make a statement. I just, and then I'm, and I suspect others might. I do, I just want to make that I do this thing, this seems like an excellent tool, very, and I, I really like the fact, first of all, where the funds are coming from, that it's a good use of, of those funds. And secondly, I, I really like, I know the question is raised is, and then sometimes we have people ask about the bid, open bid process, and this is coming before us as a single source, basically saying, this is the one we need and we shouldn't put it out for public bid, in essence. But I think you make the case well, that why it is justified that this is the product that we need, because it is, it ties well to the other, the other law enforcement agencies, what they're using, so that we can work together. And secondly, I like very much the fact that it utilizes our Axon system and ties together. So it, I think you make the case well that this would serve us well. And I appreciate the fact that, and I want our constituents to know that their privacy is protected, that this is not going to be used surveillance to write tickets in any way, I mean, at least not to write tickets, but certainly to solve crimes. So I do think it's very worthwhile. Thank you.
And this, just to add one more thing, just to kind of settle anybody's thoughts about misuse, anytime that we're accessing any type of database that involves a criminal justice investigation, the right and the need to know is essential, and we have to follow that, we have to put in case numbers, and we are subject to being audited. And so one of the things we do with all these different systems is we have an audits and inspections mechanism.
And that is correct. When I do, do searches on, on plates or for vehicles, I do have to enter what type of crime and a case number with that.
I'd be happy to make a motion.
And thank you for the presentation. Go ahead.
I move that the city council approve and, approve of and recognize this as a sole source purchase and award the attached four-year contract to Flock Group Inc. for the Simi Valley Police Department to purchase the Flock Safety Automated License Plate Reader ALPR and camera subscription in the amount not to exceed $238,050.
Second.
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 10A, city council member reports. Thank you.
Councilmember Rhodes.
All right. It's been some time since our last meeting, but a lot of that time for me was out of the country. I was able to travel to China for work. Nice to be able to get back to see my clients after all of these years. Let's see. On Wednesday, April 19, I was out of the country, but there was the Arts Commission meeting, and I was able to get the agenda and send my notes. And thank you, Councilwoman Litzner, for having my notes there at the meeting. I was disappointed I couldn't attend. Just a note, on my way back from China, I had to attend an emergency meeting in Portland, and flying into that city and driving through that city reminds me why I'm here, because we cannot become that mess. Let's see, that moves us to April 26. I was asked to visit the Siwa Pantry Food Share Program, and I forwarded a request for fund use from funding that they had received to Assistant City Manager Swan. They wanted to buy some refrigeration units to support their fresh vegetable program, and I think that's been all taken care of. On Thursday, April 27, I was here in this chamber for the National Crime Victims Rights Week. Excellent ceremony of recognition of outstanding officers that work especially in human trafficking to recognize them, but the awareness brought to that scourge was pretty impressive. There was a march around our facilities here, and I walked away with a staggering number of calls from people within Simi Valley over the past three years, specifically in the area of human trafficking. And so I look forward to, to giving the police department here and, and around the county all our support to be able to, to stop that mess. On Friday, April 28, I attended the ribbon cutting of Bree's Cakes. The wonderful thing there is that Bree is from Simi Valley, opened a shop over in the other valley, and got hammered during COVID and decided to move her business back here, and it's going to thrive and be wonderful. It's up at the town center right next to the ranch radio station. On Saturday and Sunday, two separate opening days for our local ETI 118, that's the Equestrian Twirls Incorporated folks, they had their opening events, Jim Kana on Saturday and the Western Pleasure and English classes on Sunday. I was able to present them a certificate. We're looking forward to welcoming, welcoming them back to Simi Valley when the Parks Department gets their equestrian center back into shape. And for this opening day, it was in Thousand Oaks. So while it was disappointing to go there, it was great to see them having a great opening event. And that is the end of my report.
Councilmember Litzner.
Thank you, Mayor Thomas. On Monday, April 10, we had state council, council on aging, that was great to attend. Tuesday, April 11, State of the City address, which was a wonderful event held in conjunction with the, our Chamber of Commerce and Bravo. Thank you to all who participated. And Mayor Thomas, you were in very good form. Thank you for your comments and the preparation. And a special thank you to Samantha Argarite, who I understand worked hours to make that a successful event, and I think it was for all who attended. On Wednesday, April 12, I had the, the pleasure of attending the interfaith meeting that was held with the various religious leaders who were in attendance, and they were coordinating and designing to coordinate the various food banks and food offerings here in the community. Quite a few were in attendance. It was lovely to have that discussion, to see that there's a truly desire to coordinate and be, and out of that, there came a discussion that there also may be a private Facebook group that can, that they can communicate back and forth. If one group has extra of something produced, and another has extra something, they can change and exchange back and forth. And so I appreciated the coordination efforts that were being offered, and appreciate all those who attended, including some of our city officials who were there in attendance as well. And I, it was a very good meeting. On Saturday, April 15, I want to commend our school district for an outstanding 2023 Junior Olympics, which was held at Simi Valley High School, which has been a change. Yeah, for the last number of years, it's been at Royal High School, but they've decided to go back and forth between the and forth between the larger high schools. And it was, it was a wonderful event. Appreciate being there with Mayor Thomas. It was very fun to be there and to help give the proclamation, proclaiming April 15th as Junior Olympics Day in Simi Valley. And it was just a great gathering of our, of our youth. On Wednesday, April the 19th, as mentioned by Councilmember Rhodes, I chaired the Arts Commission meeting, and we discussed the various programs and efforts being put together for our arts. And good things are happening. I appreciate the efforts there as well. On Thursday, April 20th, I had the privilege of meeting with both City Manager Brian Gabler and City Attorney David Casares. Always appreciate their wisdom, guidance, answers to my questions. So thank you very much. On Saturday, April 22nd, I attended the Yes! Job and Career Fair that was held, our Youth, Yes! Youth Employment Services, held here at the library. And basically, it was a library takeover. If anyone was trying to have quiet reading time at noon on that day, it wasn't happening, at least not specifically where, in the job fair areas. I will tell you, there was selfishly, I was attending for some young adult sons. One son attended on his own, another had to work, but he needed some ideas, and so I was attending for him. So it was very fun to go around to the various tables and solicit job information for that son. But it was over 40 vendor, it was a lot of people offering positions, many in attendance. It was just really, really well done. So I commend our, that Yes! Committee and all of their work. There was even youth financial advice going on, and there was interviewing talents, interviewing courses being, you know, anyway, skills being taught. Clearly, I need to work on speaking skills as well. But anyway, it was, it was just a wonderful event. So I want to commend all those who put that together. Then the week, the following week, April 23rd through the 30th, I had an amazing experience going to Japan with my son. So I was definitely out of the country. My apologies if I didn't respond to your emails or texts or phone calls. I didn't have a working phone there. But I will tell you, it was just a tremendous experience. And I returned today to quickly go back to work, and I noticed on my calendar that April 1st, we didn't have a proclamation, but maybe we could make another one, but April 1st is the first day of Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. And I have a coworker who, who is from, is of Japanese descent, and we chatted about the significance of this, this month to, for her celebration heritage. And so I thought most appropriate that I got to be in Japan for a month and come back and celebrate a little bit with her. And so I want to acknowledge and recognize all of our wonderful Asian Pacific Americans, and celebrate all your contributions to our community. And that ends my report. Thank you.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Tuesday, April 11th, I also attended the State of the City. All of, the entire council was there, except for Councilmember Rhodes, who was in an airplane at the time. So you were recognized, though. So thank you. It was a wonderful event. I really enjoy that style. This is the second time we've done it that way. We're utilizing the Cultural Arts Center, which is nice. It's free to the public, and it's very informative. We had the school district and the park district also represented. And of course, our mayor did a wonderful job. And Assistant City Manager Sam Argarite did a great job, and May's catering is always good food. So that was always, that was a good time. But it was a very great, good presentation. Let's see, I didn't have a lot to do until Thursday, well, Wednesday, April 19th through Sunday, the 23rd, I spent four days with 200 of my favorite high school students in a leadership camp for Rotary. It was wonderful. We had one last year. Last year was difficult, because it was the first time after COVID. So the students weren't, they weren't quite ready to leave home. You know, they'd been at home for two years, glued to their phones. So last year's was a bit of a struggle. This year, the students were told, you're going to have to turn your phone in when you get there. They all did. Not a single, not a single complaint. 200 students handed their phone in, said, okay, fine. I was so impressed with that. So just that one-year difference really, really helped in that regard. Couple of the students I asked, I said, so how was it? And they said, actually liked it. You know, not having the phone, not having to compete. And they learned to talk to each other that way. So it's, it's an event I've been doing for 20 years. I really enjoy it, and I really, I get just as much out of it as the kids do. And the kids are our future. And it's, one of the council, or one of the instructors likes to say, those students are, you are our now. You know, not just our future, you are our now. And they really are. And it was very, very impressive. One of the instructors this year was sitting in the back, but she's already snuck out. So just, hi, Tammy, I saw you. That was, that was a great event. Last, this past weekend, we had free dog adoptions at the animal shelter that's over capacity. So they were, they did cancel the free, but still, if you need a dog, you go look. There's plenty of dogs out there. They're looking for a living homes, whether they're young, old, in between, big, you know, small. They need a new family. So go, start going looking there. And on this weekend, I was unable to go to anything on Saturday. I had a memorial for my, my former mother-in-law. My mother-in-law passed away. So we had a family memorial for her. So that's it for my report.
Mayor Pro Tem Judge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On April 10th, which was our last council meeting, I don't know if I mentioned this before, but I do sit on the SCAG Scholarship Committee, and I'm definitely going to make sure this doesn't happen next year. But this year, we had one applicant from Ventura County, which was great for him or her. I don't really know who it is, their names or their sex. I just know that it was one person from Ventura County, and they got their scholarship. But, you know, just one. We got to bake, we got to do better next year. So just wanted to mention that, and congratulations to that person. I do know they're from Thousand Oaks. Continuing on with my report, I also attended the State of the City. The mayor did a great job. Sam did a great job putting it on, putting it together. And I was really happy with the school district's report and the park district's report, our city's being well-run. And I loved the name of the, of the event, you know, it's a new day. And that was great. Awesome. Great job for everybody. On, that's about it. Most of the stuff I did the last two weeks was all because of my personal life. I did have a lot of calls, though, about different things happening in our city. And if you do see anything out there, like if you see people living in vans or campers in our parking lots, make sure, don't feel, don't hesitate. You can get me on my email. You can, most people have my cell phone number. You can call me. I will get it to the police. I'll get the information to the police. If it's something else, if there's a problem you see with potholes or something like that, I know Rocky loves to do stuff about potholes, I will make sure you get directed to the right entity, too, to get those things fixed. Don't hesitate, because our citizens are our eyes and ears out there. We can't fix this stuff in a vacuum. We need to know where it is. Don't hesitate to call. Don't think you're bothering anybody. And today, I met with many men, or not many mentions, I'm sorry, Habitat for Humanity. They're going to be coming forward with a great project. I'm looking forward to seeing how it goes, and I'm sure everybody's going to like it. That's the end of my report. Thank you.
Okay. Tuesday, April 11th, I had the honor of presenting the State of the City and thoroughly enjoyed the experience. And I also want to thank Samantha. Let's see here. On Friday, April 14th, I spoke to leadership Simi Valley on their Business Economic Day. On Saturday, I attended the Junior Olympics at Simi Valley High School, and I could not believe how many people were there. You couldn't park within eight blocks of the school. Every, every spot, every curb availability, it was, it was a full house. And it was, what a great event. And the kids were so excited. I loved it. That night, I attended the Boys and Girls Club at Night at the Derby Auction and Dinner up at the Reagan Library. Very nice event. Wednesday, April 19th, participated in the Economic Development Committee with the Chamber. Then the following day, I boarded an airplane for three, you know, for a three-day trip back to Indiana to attend a family wedding. Had a good time, flew back Sunday night with food poisoning, along with 50-plus other guests to the wedding. So, yeah. So I was out of action for a few days. Really, my first day back up and going again was Thursday, and that evening, I was a panelist on the fentanyl awareness community event at the New Beginnings Church, which was a really great event. I always believed that, you know, talking about and sharing information about, about drug abuse, and especially fentanyl, which is absolutely the most dangerous illicit drug that this country has ever faced. So it was a good event, and we need, we need more of that. See here. Friday morning, I had a meeting with the new foundation president, President of the Ronald Reagan Presidential Foundation, talked about where he was going, what he was, what's going on up there, asked what, you know, they could do for us, and had a few suggestions what we could do for them, which we'll talk about. And then on Sunday, I had the honor of attending the Eagle Court of Honor, our newest Eagle Scout here in Simi. And as an Eagle Scout myself, it was kind of cool to attend for the first time as mayor. It was a nice event. And that is it.
Did you get to sit in Eagle's Nest during, because you know, you're an U, so you can sit up there. Did you do that?
No. So do we have any agenda items?
Following, Mayor, following up our discussion about the block grant, I'd like to agendize sometime that we discuss the block grant allocation. Right now, we have decided up to 15% of the grant can be reserved for public service programs. It was just in today's questions I learned that we capped that amount at $45,000. I had no idea I would have, didn't mean to be spontaneous about that. But I propose we discuss, possibly modifying that, that if the number of applicants and their asks are less than the amount that we normally have allocated, that we, that we discuss possibly returning to the applicants and seeing if they would, could utilize more funds to-
I'll second bringing that back.
And I just want to say, it is so difficult to complete those, the paperwork, that, I want, I, I want that those who are willing to do it to truly be able to utilize the funds that we have available. So, thank you.
Okay. All right. Then I am going to adjourn this meeting in honor of Valentine Galen Jr., former Chief Livingston Stone's father-in-law. Thank you, everybody, for being here.